The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome to our second work session for the Town Council. We reviewed a number of departments last night and we're going to continue on with several more tonight, but first we have the Board of Education and Superintendent LaPage is here to help us. If we have questions, if there's some highlights you'd like to present first. I've had the book, I've looked at it, I've been to your work sessions, I've listened to your, is it two or three presentations you've done so far?
It seems like 20.
It is, yeah, it's been a lot. So, I'm not sure if there's anything you would like to say at the outset and then going forward we'll have questions from any of our council members.
I wanted to just start by saying thank you for Monday night, for making arrangements to postpone your Monday meetings and being at the Board of Ed meeting to what was going on. I wanted to say that and appreciate everything that Robert and Town Council have been doing to support that effort. As far as the budget, I know I gave you a lot of information over several sessions and if you were at the Board of Ed sessions as well, as I know some were. So I guess I would just say that if you have questions, you know, we're at the 2.61% total budget increase, as you know, with the contractual amount being 2.54 and the other being .07. And I'm sure you have some questions about various lines or objects and I'm happy to help with any of those. And if I don't have the answer now, I'll get them for you. Sam happened to be off this week because his son's home from college and so he's not here. But I can get to the answers that we need if I don't have them immediately, so.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you. Everybody has seen the superintendent's presentation a couple of times and so I would like to open it up. We're going to ask some questions first and then if you need to get back to us with some information, we still have some more time in our schedule where you could get back to us with some of that, okay?
Great, thanks.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent? Wow, you did such a good job.
It's pretty, a lot of time, very thorough.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Good question. I know with Wheeler you got a grant for that and there was certain things that were added into that grant, such as some technology and all that. Was that taken into consideration when these amounts were?
As far as the renovate, like new, all the grant funds, yes, those are outside of anything that's in this budget. That's all been accounted for through the renovation project.
Okay.
Anything in this grant wouldn't, excuse me, anything in the operating budget wouldn't be a duplicate of the grant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question about the part-time. With an increase in the minimum wage, is that, I noticed in a couple of your line items that there was significant increases, is that due to the increase in minimum wage? Most likely?
That's some of the reason, and I'd have to look at each. Do you have a?
I'm looking at 1121, it looks like custodial and maintenance part-time.
There's an increase in that.
And monitors, was the other line item that just seemed to stick out a little bit.
Yeah, we did hire some additional bus monitors to help better manage things going on in the bus. As you know, some buses are pretty full, especially at the elementary level and we've had some, you know, some behavioral disciplinary issues that result in safety concerns. So for the monitors, we did hire more monitors. For the choice buses, we get all of that reimbursed, so that's not reflected in there.
Okay.
The buses that go to Hartford. As far as custodians, rather than, I know in this budget prior to presenting it to the Board of Education, there was an additional request for two more custodians so that we could reduce some of the part-time and overtime costs of custodians, but we took that out before putting it forward. We felt that we could still meet the needs of the district with the current model, but sometimes the part-time expenses are higher than they would be if we had another full-time or more person.
I understand.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one, Kathy, Madam Chairman. Line 1128, school tutors. I notice it went down from last budget, $321,000. My question to you is do the parents of the students pay any of this?
No, they don't.
Is there a fee they pay?
No, so the, these tutors, and it's a confusing term because when we think of the term tutor, a lot of times you think of that private tutoring for, you know, maybe a math, extra math support. Those types of things happen on a privately arranged basis. If, you know, someone wanted calculus help, they may hire a certified teacher to help with that. These tutors are more for our district-wide tutors that support instruction, their resources to the building, to the teachers. They assist with differentiated grouping because within a classroom you have all different levels of ability and in order to meet flexible groupings and meeting the needs of all students, we have tutors that are, we're very considerate and thoughtful about how we hire those tutors to support instruction and learning. But in a classroom of 20 to 22 or 24, or, you know, sometimes, you know, 18, but you have a variety of needs, so we use those tutors. They go from room to room to help with either math instruction or English language arts instruction or various reasons. Plus special education tutors as well that support required by law, the individualized education plan that may require one-on-one support. So a lot of those costs are factored into tutors. Sam's done a really good job of, I don't know if cleaning up is the right word, but making sure that through our, the admins program isn't the best for school budgeting. I think it's a good system for municipal budgets. It's much harder for a district budget. I know it's been a conversation that Rob and Sam have had in the past. It's a little harder to use and harder to track staff, but Sam's done a really good job and spent a lot of time on really cleaning up and making sure the people, we know who our people are and where they work, but they weren't always coded to the right position. So sometimes you'd see fluctuations in accounts and so that's why it looks like it went down by 321,000. They're just coded in the proper place, so that maybe they're a paraprofessional or something similar, but it wasn't necessarily coded in the right line item.
So they're still in your budget, these positions are still here, they're just distributed differently?
Right, they're just labeled properly in the account, within the job description that they're serving.
It's more like a reallocation, so you'll see an increase in, you know, some of these are actually certified teachers, some are paraprofessionals, some are, you know, monitors. The hard part with admins is, you know, the Board of Ed has, you know, .5 positions, .6, .7, to where they're allocated to different accounts. And when we try to track an individual position, you can't really do that. So the allocations get kind of blown out of the water. So we had to go back and really, okay, this person, .6 at a time is in this account, .4 is in this account, you know, almost a manual process versus the general ledger system doing it. So Sam has done a good job in doing that, which is why you'll see some up and downs in various accounts.
Okay. So how many tutors do we have in the system right now? If I may?
We have a total of, between all the schools, 40.4.
40.4?
Yeah. Well, there's part-time positions that aren't a full 1.0, that's what, that's kind of what Rob was talking about. You may not work a full day, you may be a half-time employee. So at the elementary schools, we have 23.4 total between the elementary schools, four at the middle school, two at the high school, and then 11 for special services, which is all the special education needs. And you can see on page 13, well, you don't have the same book, and 1128 for tutors. It also incorporates overtime and other payments and then offsets, which offsets come from grants. For instance, with tutors, we have, a tutor in each building is offset by the Open Choice Social and Academic Support Grant. It's a grant that I always wrote as Assistant Superintendent, now Mr. Levenduski writes it, but they give us about $130,000 to help provide additional staff that support not just choice students, but all of our students, so it's a benefit to the schools. But that's how we're able to offset some of those positions.
Okay. And how many paraprofessionals do you have? This one looks like it's, you didn't reallocate any of those positions, they're still?
We have quite a few.
Listed there?
Paraprofessionals, total of, it's on, it's 1124, so we have 57.5. And as you can see with special services, if you noticed that line item, it's 39.5 in special education alone, so a lot of them are servicing an IEP requirement for a pretty significant special needs, you know, either one-to-one or seeing a couple of challenging And as you know, we've, as a district, we've tried to do our best to maintain our students within district because it's typically better for the student and for all concerned. And there are situations where it's not possible and we have to outplace, we've done that this year and we've done it in the past. We're trying to do less of that, but it results in an increase in internal staff. But the cost of the internal staff versus outplacing a student at sometimes between 80, 100, 120,000 when you factor in transportation, it's a great savings. I actually heard of one from a superintendent in West Hartford, then moving into the district, ECF placed, and the placement, the tuition they were looking for was over $600,000 per year.
Yeah. So your excess cost starts to kick in after that, right? When you have that kind of a situation, excess cost?
Excess cost.
Helps offset, is it three and a half times or is it four and a half times the district must pay?
Once you pay four and a half times, the per student expenditure, which is over $17,000 in Plainville, so that's one time, so you do 4.5 times that, so you're about 80,000. So once you get over that, so you're paying that first amount and then once you get over that, the state is supposed to fully reimburse the excess cost, but they never have. They're reimbursing between 70 and 75 percent. They've never fully funded excess.
But you take the excess cost upfront from the town, right? You factor the excess cost into your budgeting because it's not in the town's revenue, it's in the board's budget?
Correct, it's factored into the.
So it's there, if that occurs, you have the funding available during the year?
To, yes, to a degree, depending on what surprises we have. We don't always know who we're going to have in the district. People move in, people move out, students come back from outplacements or go out to outplacements, so.
And so I was just curious, Robert, maybe you can help me with this. So the excess cost that comes into the town is pretty much allocated to the Board of Education for the special education use. So it's been 700,000, 650,000, I know it varies every year. So what happens when the excess, all of the excess cost is not used by the Board of Ed? Does it revert back to the town or does, you know, after all is said and done and all the special education has been accounted for and does not expend all those excess cost dollars, what happens?
We, well, we put in the budget a certain estimate of what we're going to get for excess cost.
Right.
We end up getting more than that for some reason.
It goes.
As long as the cost don't go up as a result of that, then that would go into the general fund.
The only way we would get more than what we budget for is because of the cost being higher than we expected.
Uh huh.
So it's not like we get excess funds and we're holding on to them. The reason we get more funds than we budget is because the costs are higher.
So if we expend the money, then we get, so it's, they're tied together.
If it's a great year and we don't expend what we think we're going to expend, we don't get what we budget either.
Right, okay.
So it goes both ways. So really every dollar that comes in for those grants does go to the Board of Education, whether it's below, plus or minus what we budget, because it truly is their offset.
Okay. Thank you.
And in fact, if it does go over, that means we're picking up, since we're only funding 75 percent of that, you know, we're paying the other 25 percent over and that's what, you know, puts a strain on the Board of Education.
But that can change year over year depending on what the, is it based on the prior years or they look at the children that are outplaced, that we're going to have to utilize that excess cost? How does the state determine what our excess cost funding is going to be every year?
Well, it's submitted for.
It's submitted for that current year, so.
Current year?
Yeah, it's only based on the students you currently have that are being outplaced and the excess cost for their expenses. So it's not based on a previous year, it's based on what your actual expenses are in the current year. And it has to be submitted. I don't know when Sam submits it, if it's mid-year and end of year or?
We just received the first payment for this year last week, as a matter of fact, or the week before that. So it was around 300 and, just over 300,000. The second piece that'll come towards the end of May for the full year.
Okay. Thank you all for that. Any other questions for the superintendent who is here? I have a few more. I don't want you to leave too soon, Steve.
You don't want to leave me down, let me down, right? I knew you had something.
You know, there's just always a question. Some of it has to do with capital and it also, and it has to do with technology, so if you want me to, I can ask for the information and you can have Kevin get back to us?
They're coming back tomorrow for the capital.
Oh, they are, okay, I thought, all right, then I'll hold that.
We're doing the capital.
They're coming back tomorrow for that?
Tomorrow, together.
All right, then I will hold off on that.
Kevin will be here as well as Steve Bustle.
Yeah, Kevin and Steve are coming.
Okay, perfect. But I do have more questions. And the question I have is regarding your certified administrators for next year. In your presentation, you had reduced a central office administrator, which is a curriculum director, and you built in funding for a 10-month equity, ELL, and climate specialist.
Just to clarify on that, there should have been a reduction of a curriculum supervisor. I need the curriculum director, the top position that oversees all the, basically K through, pre-K through 12 oversight. The supervisor, which is currently, well, Tawana is currently enacting principal at Linden, but she's officially that role of supervisor of curriculum for pre-K through five. My vision for that is to fill Ms. Perez's vacated position with someone who's highly qualified. It may or may not be Tawana, depending on what happens with that. And then to not fill the supervisor position and then from there to hire an EL, Equity, Community Outreach. It's a title, but the position's going to have many, many roles and some of it will still be curriculum instruction. It's just, it's a different naming and it's a shorter, it's a 10-month position plus potential for a few weeks, like we did with our new assistant principals at the high school and our new assistant principal at the middle school. It's a shorter administrative, it's not a 12-month position, so it's a lower pay.
So the curriculum director is going to be replaced, you're going to have another, I guess I'm trying to figure this out.
Instead of two curriculum positions, I'll have one.
You'll have one curriculum director?
Yep.
Okay. And so also in this description, you mentioned, I know what an ELL is, it's English language learners to help with that. Have we increased the number of students that have to have that service? How many do we have?
Dramatically, close to 180.
180?
And it goes up significantly every year from many, many different countries of origin and many, many different levels of need. There's a two-page, single-spaced document that Rosa Perez gave me detailing all the roles and responsibilities she has with meeting the needs of those students, including for a school that has at least, the numbers escaped me, whether it's 10 or 20, I think it's 20, 20 students that are Spanish-speaking students, you must have a bilingual education teacher at that school. We had to hire someone in that position for this past year who serves a combined role, also supports other schools, running around a lot to all the buildings and meeting the needs by law. Whenever someone comes into a district, you have to determine their primary language and what's spoken at home. There's a language assessment that must be administered, a Last Links test that's given to all ELL students as well. That just recently happened, right David?
The test on the Accountability Index?
Right. The Last Links happened, it's happened. And then on the Accountability Index, which is the district's report card, now our English language learner students are basically counted in that report under three different indicators. So all students, high-need students, and then there's a separate category for English learners. That was new, it was kind of a surprise this year when we got the report card, the English learner category was a new category. So I know Mr. Levenduski was at an Assistant Superintendent meeting when they were all kind of taken off guard by that. So, I mean, it's putting important emphasis on making sure we meet the needs of all students. Is it an additional responsibility to the district? Yes, it is. That's why I'm proposing, I proposed in my budget, a shift in some of the responsibilities and some of the title. So we'll still have two, if you look at it, it's not a reduction of administrator, it's just, it's a reduction of some of the expense in that administrator because I'm going to be replacing the supervisor instruction with a lower cost position.
Understood, with other. Okay, and can you tell me what a climate specialist and an equity person would do?
That's the same person, that's just.
Equity and climate specialist?
ELL, equity, school climate, community outreach. It's all, it's really, I'm kind of giving you the job description within the title, but it's the same person that's doing the EL coordination. Our, as far as climate specialist, we've put, anywhere you go, if you, whether you're listening to legislators across the country or Connecticut Association Board of Education, Connecticut Association Public School Superintendents, there's a huge emphasis on social and emotional learning, on ensuring a positive school climate, on meeting the social and emotional needs of students. And that looks like different things at different levels and depending on the need of the students. So you'll notice that there's an emphasis on that in my budget between, you know, between students at the very early pre-K ages, when they really need to learn, you know, how to control their impulses and how to take a breath and calm down before they react. And that continues all the way through adulthood and you've seen bad examples all the way, but we're all guilty of that at times. But really learning to monitor and regulate your own emotions so that you can then help others in a better way. This year, we had a whole district training. We have teams from each school that are trained in Yale's research, that was grant-funded that research. And I won't tell you a little story, but basically they, you know, they went to, I went to, with the previous superintendent, with Maureen and our Director of Student Services, two summers ago, we went to a three-day workshop at Yale to really, it's called the SeedLinks Institute, to really lead that work. And any district that doesn't have social and emotional learning as an emphasis is really trying to play catch-up. It's a huge emphasis with the legislature right now, there's a, we just looked at bills today that are really pushing for that. So as far as a school climate specialist, school climate's really everything. If you don't have a positive school climate, the school doesn't operate and the dollars don't do what they need to do. So a climate specialist would assist, it's only part of that EL position and the community outreach, there's a lot in that position, would really help.
Is this one person that's going to be doing all this?
Yes.
One person?
With a cape.
Wow, that's a lot of different stuff.
It's a lot of different stuff. We all do a lot of different stuff, it's just not all in our job description. My job description's about eight pages, so.
I was looking up what a school climate specialist does, actually, and.
Are you trying to give me another position, Kathy?
It's very interesting.
I'll take it.
And I was wondering, they talk about engaging people, student, family, and educators to work together to live and contribute in a shared school vision, norms, values, and expectations that support people feeling socially, emotionally, and physically safe. Does that sound about right? So do you think that we have a, we have a community that has to have this extra support in the schools? Are you seeing that we don't have people that do these things, that support their children, support education in a manner that's healthy, support people and each other, each other, and not just children and families, but staff as well, that they support each other through their endeavors? We don't have that? Or do we have to, is the goal to improve upon that?
We do have that embedded within a lot of our current positions and our principals and our teachers are learning to do a better job of that through their ruler training through Yale. Our leaders are learning to do a better job of that through setting a school charter that helps everyone to develop a climate that is the way you want to feel when you're at work and helping others to support you in feeling that way. Honestly, a climate specialist is going to help to coordinate all those programs among the schools, help to provide trainings and professional development around SEL because it's critical to the growth, mental and emotional growth of our adults in a very trying world and of our students. And you just have to visit a school to see that the needs of children have changed, whether, we don't, I don't know what the reason is, but they've changed. Kids are different, they have a lot more needs and some of it comes from what they bring to school, some of it's restorative practice where you have students who, you know, we see the good, the bad, and the ugly. And there is ugly, there are ugly things that happen in kids' lives. So, and our job is to help all students to maximize their potential and become productive citizens. So we take what comes to us and we need different levels of supports to help all of our students to be successful. So this position, it's a small part of the position, honestly, our principals are leading that charge in every school.
Yep.
This person would just help them and support them and help to provide professional development like our curriculum director does now. So it's a bit of an overlap and not part of the position, but honestly, there's enough to have an EL coordinator in itself, so maybe I was just trying to emphasize that that position's going to have a lot to do and they won't have any downtime.
Okay. And that's a 10-month position?
10 months and three weeks in the summer. That's how we operate with our current, for lack of a better term, part-time administrators or school time administrators. Those three weeks is, you know, in the principal or, in this case, would be me, would determine when those three weeks would best be served, whether it's, you know, if there's a big project we're working on at the end of the year, I may have them stay until, you know, the end of July and then take off until convocation or maybe you split it up in, you know, a week and a half at each time, the beginning and the end of the summer.
Okay. And how do you perceive our students are doing in terms of their academic progress?
It's a, that's a big, I don't want to call it a loaded question, but you have to break.
It's an important one.
It's very important, but you can't answer it in one word. There's going to be a full presentation on the Accountability Index, which we've spent a tremendous amount of time looking at as a district. So our kids are doing well, is my equally global answer. Our kids are doing extremely well in certain areas and there are areas we need to grow in, like every district in this state. So we, our work as a principal and a school leader, PLC, that meets every, every, you guys, two weeks and talks just about every day, is to really identify. Mr. Levenduski's done a tremendous job of really picking apart the Accountability Index, putting together presentations, charts, you think my presentations are, well, his are much better, they're concise. But we've met with all the principals, really broken it down to quite a fine detail level and they're jumping on it and working really hard to improve everything, well, now it's out the window with attendance, but that's going to be across the state, but that's, attendance is one of the Accountability Index measures, there's a lot.
I know, I looked at your school profile from 2017, 2018, because the 18, 19 one isn't out there yet apparently, not available. And looking at the raw test scores from most recently, they haven't changed that much from 2017, 18 to, and I'm not talking about this indexing, extra stuff they add in there, it's about the first scores that we look at, and I will specifically say the index rate. Can you tell me what that means, index rate? So for example, ELA performance, math performance, ELA academic growth, math academic growth, what does that index rate actually represent? Because then there's other things like target points earned, maximum points, there's things that get added on after that index rate, so what is that first score?
That's an hour lesson, but basically the Accountability Index gives you a kind of a gross number of students who met the goal on those assessments and then it, then you also, it's broken down. So now, on the old CAPT, CMT and CAPT, you basically, you're either proficient or you weren't. And some students never had a chance of approaching, making goal, I should say, or becoming advanced on the CMT or the CAPT. On the smarter balance than on using the new Accountability Index, you receive a score, every district receives a score for how many students make goal on that test, but then each year, based on their score, the state sets a growth goal. And you receive a separate score for how many students met the growth goal.
Yep.
And it's a pretty complex formula and then it's, you know, there's a lot more to it, but that's.
They don't make it easy, do they? So for example, ELA, this is in 2017, 18, all students, their index rate was 69.7 and the target was 75. So we are trying to get 75 percent of the students that, no, what does the 75 mean? Is that the goal, the number you want to reach? And 69.7 is that accumulated number that got to that goal? Okay. So for, if there was a goal of, let's say, 75 and they reached 65.9, 69.7, okay, now I understand that better because I thought it was 69.7 out of 100, but it's actually out of the goal that you're trying to reach, which is 75.
Yeah.
Right, so we haven't gotten there yet, we're still working to get there.
Always.
Okay.
And when we get there, it'll probably go up.
Okay.
It's a moving target, but.
All right.
But we're doing great things and I'm proud of the work that all of our staff are doing to get students to, with all the challenges that are out there. to, to get students to, with all the challenges that, that are, that are out there, that are working extremely hard, really pinpointing assessment and instruction and, and really supporting our kids to be more and more successful. And, you know, I've, I've seen a few districts and I've gotten calls from superintendents, you know, what happened, what happened with your eighth grade math scores? You know, they couldn't believe it, you know, through the roof. So a lot of pockets of excellence and we're, we're, we're trying to have good contagion. It's a bad word right now, but, you know, really, really spreading those good practices. And, you know, Mr. Levenduski's a, a key in that, so I want to give him credit for the work he's doing. And all principals and all staff members know how seriously we're taking this. And I predict that you're going to see scores do some great things in the next couple of years.
Just one more quick question about those tests. Do the parents get a copy of the results? They do? Okay.
It's mailed in directly by the, yeah.
Okay. All right. I, I appreciate your patience with me because there's a, you know, your, your budget has a lot of information in there and there's a lot of moving parts and it's, you know, not, not an easy task, but I do appreciate you taking the time to explain it.
Of course. And I think if, if you're available and, and, April? We're doing, Mr. Levenduski's doing a full, and we can always videotape it as well, but he's doing a full explanation of the Accountability Index and all the different indicators and how we, how we're doing, what we're, what our goals are, the work we're doing in school. So it's, it's really, it's pretty detailed and there's a lot of time spent on it, so I just didn't want to give you a...
No, I, I understand. There's a lot that goes into it, but it's an important measure of how we're doing as a district, how our children are doing and where the resources should be put to help them improve where we're not doing as well as we should, so.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. So if we're going to, does anybody else have any more questions for the superintendent with his budget, anything?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
I just had one. And I believe I know the answer. I just want to confirm that this is still the case. Technology-related but not capital items, but technical support staff, AKA Kevin Ross and his staff.
Yes, yes.
Their salaries and benefits appear totally in the Board of Ed budget. Or is there some split with the...
They do. We, the Board of Education pays their salaries. And if you notice on, in the page that kind of describes the offsets, so the way it's, the way it's shown is that the SRO is paid entirely by the town.
Right, yeah.
And, and, you know, Kevin Ross's salary is paid by the board and all of his staff, actually. And then, you know, payroll, payroll does both the town and the board and there's some HR function overlap as well, so...
Yeah, you know the HR overlap.
Yep. So when you look at that, it's basically offsets. Those are the offsets.
Balance.
So we're paying for some and you're paying for some, we're sharing services and it's, it's worked out really well.
Okay.
I don't know if I explained that well.
No, you did. Okay. You know, I understand it. Yeah, we have sort of the tech staff on the board side and then we have the SRO and part of HR on the town side.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All set? Anybody else have any questions? Before we say goodbye for now?
I have one. I'm just curious.
Okay.
Line 1112, substitute teachers. Two years ago, you had a budget of $529,685. Last year, you cut it back to 380. One question I have is how much are we paying subs and the drastic cut? How'd you do that?
We're paying subs $85 a day, if my memory serves correct. Yeah. Which is fairly competitive, but not as much as you'd get in, you know, Bristol or New Britain. But, you know, we're, and we still struggle to get subs, enough subs on some, on some days. 1112, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to find it.
You would reduce the budget by 150,000 roughly. Just curious, did you do something different from two years ago? Matter of fact, it was 218, 219.
Yeah. That, that's the actual spent that year. That wasn't the budget. So the budget in this year is 380 and the budget for next year proposed is 380, so there's no change in the budget.
No, but in 218 and 19?
That's what they've, they, they spent more. In some years, yeah, some years, thank you, Rob. Some years, we have an anomaly with a lot of people out for different medical reasons and coverages, so you're still paying those salaries, but you're paying additional subs so they're, you know, I believe a couple of years ago, we had some pretty significant long-term, you know, absences from, from teachers and staff and you have to fill out those positions. Some of them are, are higher-paid positions if you have to get someone who's a highly certified position, so it does fluctuate a little. It's higher than we want it to be, in all honesty. But, you know, we're hoping to contain those costs. So it's, this is a, this is a, you know, I would say aggressive budget as far as the number that we have in there, you know? I'm hoping it doesn't go over. It's a, it's one of the risk areas, but we're hoping for a good year with subs.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Oh, that's a good question, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for, for Steve? Okay. Thank you again. I appreciate your time and I guess we'll see you tomorrow for the capital discussion.
Thank you very much. If anything else comes up to you, you have questions about, just let, you know, I'll be happy to.
Yep.
Okay.
Will Kevin here be, be here tomorrow with you?
Kevin and Steve Bustle, yes.
Okay. Robert, you want to take over? We have, we're running a little behind, maybe? Not, not really. Not really. We're at...
We're doing okay.
Next, we have E4, which is Public Works, and that would be roadways.
Roadways, yes. Dom?
Front and center. The recommended budget is $1,009,951. It's an increase of $61,680 or 6.5%. Pretty much all of the increase is, has to do with full-time, is in full-time salaries. We have a, you know, a, a standard increase for the existing workers of 2.25%. And, and we're recommending an additional roadways person. So there is an additional full-time person in this budget. The person, we had, we had a, that full-time person back in 2013. It was reduced in 2013 and due to various factors and work demands. I, I believe, you know, I, I believe that, that Dom made a, Moschini made a good case for, for adding, adding back in so that we can maintain the level of services that, you know, that we feel are needed. We have, we have an aging roadways crew and, you know, so that leads to, at least, that leads to more, more absences that we might normally have. Dom works some very hard, so I mean, it isn't as, you know, it's, it's a labor-intensive job and, and, and a hands-on job. So, you know, that's part of it as well. And we'd like to, you know, we're starting people at the entry-level position and if somebody retires, they're going to be retiring with a lot of skills and we, you know, we begin to see that coming. And so we, we feel that if we can bring somebody in an entry-level position, we can train them so that when the person retires a year or perhaps even sooner from now, you know, we're not, we're not hiring them cold and, and not having some type of experience with what we need to get some of these jobs done. And if, if you'd like, I can, you know, Dom can expand on that as well.
Okay.
Would you like for him to expand on that, on that?
Sure.
Madam Chair, you don't understand that. The infrastructure of our town is, is pretty complicated and most of my guys have been there 20 years plus and all of us know the ins and outs of our town. We're trying to teach some of the young guys what's going on because within the next four years, I'm going to have three more guys retiring. So it's, you know...
Evolution.
Yeah, trying to bring them up through and paying attention along with our road bond work that were going on. We're busy 370 days a year. I mean, we're running. Except for this winter, we're kind of lucky this winter. So what I'm looking to do is bring us back to staff like we were before. You know, I got one guy out now with a back injury, having that home. He had an operation last Friday. He's out for eight weeks. Another gentleman that's been with us for 20 years is out, going to be out with a rotator cuff on the 25th for eight more weeks. And as you guys see, you know, we're on the road and you see me hustling back and forth, running, driving dump trucks, running everything we need to do. So, and you really need to get some labors and get them back the way it used to be at little attrition so everybody knows what's going on. You know, we have expensive equipment, so it's not like you're going out and you're going to be getting somebody off the street to run our pieces of equipment. Everything we got's $100,000, so, you know, we maintain them well and I'm not looking to get some beauties in there working for us. It's always a...
So is this a laborer you're going to hire or is it a driver?
Well, what we did is we took one of my summer helps this year. He was a good seasonal worker. Brought him in as a part-time, full-time employee. He's working toward getting his driver's test. He goes next week for his license. So I'm kind of hoping the self-pride, like the old days, like we used to do, will come, you know, come across and not like just going to tractor-trailer school and getting your license. This kid worked hard. You know, we gave him the opportunity and he's proud of it and that's what I'm looking to do with some other younger kids and workers too. I am looking to hire an operator too because we are losing, you know, our operators. They're getting older. They're out. Two of the guys that are going in right now for, that'll be gone for eight weeks are our operators. So, you know, whether I'm jumping in the machine or, or Dave, our new foreman, you know, he's new aboard too, so he's trying to teach him the ropes too. You know, you don't realize what we've learned over the last 20, 25 years working for the town and how, what we know. And we're trying to pass that along. So I really hope you can consider, you know, looking into my recommendation on bringing us back to staff.
So that, Robert, that position's included in your full-time number?
Yes, it is.
And can you explain to me the reduction in the part-time salary? What's that about?
Part of that is because we're, we're adding for the full, on the full-time side, so...
So is the, okay. So is the part-timer going to be a full-timer? Is that your...
Well, we're eliminating some of the full-time need if we are able to get the, the part-time...
Part-time need.
Yeah, we're eliminating some of the part-time need if we can get the full-time person.
Okay, okay. Got it.
And just pointing out, Dom, you know, stated that, you know, they just, that he just had a, a part-time person become full-time and training him. I mean, you heard that.
Right.
We had a, an employee, a longtime employee who, who went out on workers' comp a year ago, was out for many months, came back for a short period of time and then was back out again for, for, you know, and, and still remains to be out and we're, we're currently looking to come up with some type of settlement for retirement because it doesn't look like this person's coming back. But, you know, by and large, for a year, we were down a person, you know, and, and it, and at some point in time, Dom came and said, you know, I'm, I'm down a person. You know, it isn't like a couple of weeks or a long, you know...
Right.
And I said, well, do you have any opportunity to bring a, you know, a part-time person up to a full-time position? And, you know, with the understanding that if this person comes back, he's going to have to, you know, he's, you know, realizes it could be a temporary full-time position. And it turns out that, that it ended up being, you know, a permanent full-time position. And so, because this other person's not coming back. And if we hadn't made that decision, you know, we might have lost that person to another job somewhere else, you know? So, so these are the types of decisions we make on the run. Now, when that person's on a worker's comp, our worker's comp insurance is paying, you know, the salary of that person. So that loosens up the full-time payment to be able to pay this person. So we're not going over budget as a result of that.
Got it.
But, you know, but that's, those are the monies that we used and now we, you know, that transition's going to go relatively smooth. But he went, you know, Dom went six months without a full-time person and came to me and said, hey, we're hemorrhaging here in terms of, you know, you know, not having enough workers and, and that's why we increased those hours and, and, you know.
Got it.
But we don't want that, that, you know, we'd like to avoid that. Like, you know, I think he's demonstrated, you know, what the work that the roadways is doing that justifies an additional full-time person, in our opinion. That's the recommendation.
Now, how long can a person stay out on workers' comp? Is that, is there like a limit or is it, can that go on for endless?
It goes on until, until they're able to determine, you know, like the maximum, maximum capability that they can do and, and then it's a question of whether they can, you know...
Perform the functions of their job as stated.
Yeah. And the question is, you know, are they going to be able to do that some point in time? And it takes a while to, to make that determination, especially if it involves a back issue.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
You know, so, and, and in this particular instance, it did. So it, it can take any, it can, especially if it's going to be, result in a total disability, you know, or, you know, or medical disability, retirement, you know, that, that can take a significant period of time.
Yep.
See, and also, Katha, in regards for our CDL license, you have to have a medical card?
Yep.
So if he's not issued a medical card, he can't hold a CDL license.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, and if you don't have a CDL license, you're really no benefit.
You have to be cleared to be able to get that.
Correct. And it's no benefit to me if he doesn't have a CDL, so, for the town.
Okay.
As far as the other line item, I mean, you know, the small increase in the, in overtime for regular and snow, and that's basically because, you know, the, the salaries are going up like 2.25%, you know?
Oh, right. It's tied to their, to their rate.
Right.
Okay.
So it kind of moves a little bit instead of, you know, keeping it at the same amount and then trying to jump it, you know, you know, you know, so we gradually increase it at, you know, based upon the salary increases, so.
Okay.
But everything else is the same. So really, the, the increase in this particular budget is the, you know, is the additional person.
The additional person?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Dominic while he's here? His fine job that he does for us?
Thank you.
Okay.
All of my guys.
All right. So...
Madam Chair?
Would we, yes, I'm looking for a motion. Thank you.
Motion to fund Department 305 in the amount of $1,9,951.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Each seven, buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds. Dave, front and center. The recommended budget of $1,117,142. An increase of $51,148 or 4.8%. The full-time salary increase is $37,000 of that $51,000 increase, actually 30, you know, pretty close to $38,000 or 4.91%. The full-time salary is, includes, includes the 2.25% and there are some step increases as well as far as that's concerned.
Steps.
So it's, it's the steps that's driving that up. No change in full-time positions either up or down as far as, as far as this particular department is concerned. Part-time salary, where am I? Part-time salary increase is, is impacted by minimum wage.
Part-time salary increase is, is impacted by minimum wage. We, we hire the part-time, summertime workers at minimum wage, and, and so that's what's driving that cost, that, that increase up.
So it's not adding additional part-timers? It's just minimum wage impact on that?
We're keeping the same number, or same number of hours total...
Yep.
...throughout the year for part-time salary.
And basically, it's just, you know, just, you know, we, we have six part-time summer workers. We pay them $12 an hour, a forty-hour week, for thirteen weeks. So we come up with that number.
Okay.
Small increases in overtime, uh, you know, based upon the, you know, same thing with, with roadways. For repair and maintenance, um... We, we have, uh, let me see what I got here. Repair and maintenance, we have some of large overhead doors in our garages, and that need additional work coming up this year, so that's, that's a thousand dollars of the increase. Um, the boiler certificate is another $300. Oh, no, that's on the maintenance. Sorry. That's, that's, that's repair and maintenance. I'm trying to look for my notes here. I think repair and maintenance is based upon past historical. You see, $66,000 is what we're, what the department requests. We spent $80,404 in nineteen. We spent, uh, to date this year, $81,000, and so, um, it's older equipment. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Dave was, you know, he feels that there's a need to increase that. When we were discussing that, he feels that it should be higher than that. I said, "Well, let's make it $66,000", so, um...
It's largely a moving target with those, with the parts and supplies, but also, everything's getting so much more expensive. I mean, we're not getting, a lot of materials we use, especially in the plumbing and HVAC areas, used to actually come from China. They were good, good materials. They were making it out of our scrap. They were sending them with it. They're not taking our scrap anymore, so everything made here is a lot more expensive.
So the increase is, is based upon historical, you know, numbers. We can, we've continually run over, at least the last several years, so I felt, you know, some type of increase, certainly not commensurate with what we've, what we've actually experienced, but that we should start to gradually increase that line item and, and monitor it going forward. As far as the other contractual, and I apologize for, uh, any confusion, that's a $1,300 increase. That's a $52,435, and again, that's the additional work that we have to do on the overhead doors for a thousand dollars, and the boiler certificate that's required. Uh, I'm one of the boilers, which is the reason for the $1,300 increase, all, all other items being equal. For the maintenance contracts, the increase is $1,765. We have the historical center, um, elevator, uh, that's, that's, uh, an increase of $990, and we have, uh, some, I guess, you know, some true green, I guess...
Landscape.
Landscaping.
Yeah, a little, well, actually, they, they take care of a lot of shrubs in the planters, and some of the ones at the town hall and the fire department as well. And it's, we contract that, that part of it out.
So you have a decrease in auto repair and maintenance, and the increase in the buildings and grounds is tree work. The $3,000 is, is some of the tree work, you know, around our parks.
Yeah, largely tree work has been the increase. The need for the increase, anyway.
Okay. Um, any questions for Dave before we go ahead and make a motion? All right, can I have a motion to approve Department 310?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 310 in the amount of $1,117,142.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere.
Yep.
Oh, E9, you, you got the next one, too.
Next item is municipal building maintenance.
Yep.
That's close. That was close.
That's, that looks like one.
It has to do with such items as electricity, natural gas, heating oil, gasoline and diesel, water and hydrant, you know, telephone, you know, all of those items. Recommended budget is $1,421,200. It's a decrease from the current year's budget of $14,200. $200 are basically down 1%. Uh, we continue to see savings in the electricity line items, uh, based on, you know, the changes that we've made and continue to make over time. I think the latest savings is, is, is the result primarily of our virtual net metering contracts.
Correct, yes.
And, uh, this is a new concept, where we're actually buying electricity from a solar farm out in Franklin, Connecticut, and getting credits on our electricity bills, and, and adds, as resulted in savings that we wouldn't have already, we wouldn't have had otherwise. In fact, I received a call from our, um, virtual net metering consultant that we work, work with today, and said that the state legislature may be opening up some of the rec credits, which would allow for them to have some other, additional virtual net metering, uh, virtual net metering opportunities. And are we interested? And, and we have a couple of schools that, you know, could qualify, uh, for that, so we're gonna be exploring that next week. So, you know, to keep, you know, um, taking advantage of, of locking in, uh, you know, uh, these types of, uh, uh, rates that, that are lower than what we're currently paying. I was talking to another town today, and, uh, they were talking about charter revision, and, and they were asking me to come and talk to them about, you know, the benefits of a town manager, and they said, "Well, you know..." And I said, "Well, you know, some of the things..." The person said, "Well, you know, manager, you know, can help you, help us with grants, you know, you're more successful." And I said, "Well, even beyond that, we, we keep an eye on the new technology." I said, "Have you ever heard of virtual net metering?" And he was like, "What?" You know, and so we've had virtual net metering for a couple of years now. And I said, you know, "If you're able to be on the front line of things, and, and, and it's a relatively complicated process, but, you know, uh, you know, a lot of first selectmen may turn around and say, ah, you know, that's just pie in the sky kind of stuff. Well, as managers, we dig in and, and, and do the research, and, and, you know, we end up being in the forefront of some of these things." So we've been able to take advantage of that, and, well, we think it's appropriate. And we've brought that to the council for, you know, for, for the contracts, uh, a couple of times. So, um, so that, that continues to pay benefits as far as our budget is concerned, and we're proud of those, those results. We do see, we are locked in for gasoline, diesel, prices. I know they're dropping now, but we're locked in next year, so, you know, uh, I'm not sure who could've predicted, uh, what has happened to the market, but, uh, so there is a slight increase in that for this, for next year. Water and hydrant is what we pay for fire protection, um, and, and we pay a significant amount for fire protection, and that's, you know, just the, you know, and those are all approved by the, by PURA, you know, the Public Utilities Regulatory Agency, as well as the water and hydrant for our buildings, uh, up a little bit as well. So, uh, based on usage.
Excuse me, Robert. Do you anticipate, um, valley water going in for a rate increase this coming year?
Yes.
That's what this is based on? There...
Some of it is, yes. Some of it is. For example, if, if they, if, if the water company replaces a pipe and puts in a larger diameter pipe, we get charged more for that, because there's more capacity for fire protection. So some of that is related to when they replace the pipes.
Higher usage.
Right, right.
Okay. But they're definite, you're, you've been told they're gonna apply for a rate increase?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, it has, some of it has to do with the, um...
Well, it has to do with their new process, right? But don't they apply for that after it's in? They have to spend the money and then go and ask for it?
Yes, but they're also looking for a rate increase in general, you know.
Yep.
Not all of that's factored in here. Some of it is, 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 we're using more water as well.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for the town manager regarding Department 315?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Just in that same line item, we were just talking about water and hydrant for buildings, um, line 53551. You know, we budgeted 32.5 last year, and we're estimated to spend $50,000 this year. So, I mean, that's a, we're looking to run 18, 17.5 over budget, and now we're only looking, essentially looking to really up what our estimated costs for this year is by $2,300. What happened this year? I mean, I understand, you said there, there wasn't a rate increase this year. I mean, you mentioned changing of water pipes and things like that. I mean, that's a fairly significant jump in one year, and why aren't we expecting that same kind of jump next year?
Well, I think what we're, I think a lot of that, that number has to do with sprinkling of our athletic fields.
Irrigation.
So if we have a dry season, we're irrigating a lot more than we might otherwise do. So I think that's what's driven up some of the costs, you know, you know, last summer.
Yeah, we ran, we ran irrigation quite a bit.
Yeah, it didn't rain all last summer.
No, it was fairly dry, so...
It was wet early and then got dry, you know.
Yeah.
And that will really jump the costs.
Yeah.
So a lot of that is irrigation.
Yeah, just running the, running the, the meter.
Yeah.
All those. Okay. I was just curious, because, I mean, that's something, hey, if we're going 17.5 over this year, is the $2,300 extra for next year enough, especially with the rating?
Yeah, the fifty grand, I estimate, is based on what we've already spent, you know, you know, per month cost, if you will, you know, extrapolated out for twelve months. I mean, we may not hit that fifty, you know, if it rains the rest of the year, per se. But we did have a big hit in the first few months of the fiscal year last summer.
Sure, okay. Thank you very much.
And it may turn out we have a wet year that, you know, the actual use next year is, is $30,000.
Listen, it's all shifting it around. If it snowed, we would add a lot more overtime. We wouldn't need as much. Well, I get it. I was just curious. You're gonna spend it one way or the other.
Dave goes through the farmer's almanac, you know, every year, line by line, page by page, and, and, "Look what, how it helped us this year."
Thank you for spending that.
It was supposed to be a very difficult winter, this year, according to the farmer's almanac.
We fixed our plows all up, and it didn't snow, so it worked, worked out well.
Part of that increase, too, is also moving, uh, getting rid of the senior center line item. Again, very similar to what we did with advertising. I don't need a line specific to the senior center. It's buildings and grounds is buildings and grounds. It's all our buildings. So, um...
So you see a decrease in the senior?
Yeah.
Right. Same thing with the telephone below.
Built it up, right?
Seventeen hundred dollars of that $2,300.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Got it.
And the same thing with the telephone, $2,400. That's built into the increase for telephone buildings and grounds. Same thing.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just had one, one other quick question for...
Sure.
Mr. Emery. Uh, Robert, uh, natural gas, was that, I noticed that was somewhat, actually somewhat of a decrease, but that is, is that also a locked-in?
Yes.
Price? Okay.
Yes, it is. I locked in gas, diesel, natural gas, heating oil. When the time was right, who knew that, like Robert said, it would've gone down now, but...
Yeah, you had said gas and diesel. I wasn't sure if you're referring to the natural gas of, you know, 5352, but you are, okay.
Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion to approve Department 315?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve, uh, Department 315 in the amount of $1,421,200.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Department 320?
Yes, which is on, flip the page, to E11.
Oh. Thanks, Dave.
Has to do with the motor vehicle and equipment pool. Recommended budget is $139,674. An increase of $4,200 or 3.1%. We're looking for a slight increase in repair and maintenance. You can see the request is higher than that, but I, you know, so I, I, I felt that some, uh, increase was warranted. We budgeted 82.8 for the current fiscal year. We expect to, you know, run over, um, somewhat, so I think a small increase in that line item of $2,200, you know, makes sense. Repair and maintenance for snow removal, we really didn't, you know, have much of that for the current fiscal year, but you could see that the year before, we ran, you know, significantly over $22,000, so I felt a, uh, Dom was looking for, you know, a request of $18,000. I, I felt that, uh, you know, that a slight increase, uh, you know, maybe half of the increase of, to what he was requesting would be appropriate. And again, these are guesses. You know, there, there's no magic on this, you know, in terms of, you know, I can tell you exactly how it's gonna be spent. It really depends on how the season goes. Um, auto supplies, um... Yeah, we reallocated the auto supplies, and we reallocated that back up into, uh, um, auto repair and ma, yeah. So, where you see the, the thousand-dollar decrease in, um, in auto supplies and parts, and auto repairing, um, I'm trying to...
Auto repair and maintenance. The, the thousand-dollar decrease in, in auto supplies and parts and auto repair and maintenance went into the repairs and maintenance. $2,200 increase.
So line 52480, you put that thousand dollars in that line?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
That's...
No, um, that, that, and, and the auto repair, yes. The auto repair and maintenance went to 52480. Thousand dollars in auto supplies and parts, the 52350 went into the 52340.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, that's what I...
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Dominic, on line, uh, for repair and maintenance, 52340, I know you have a new, and just looking at the capital budget, I know there's a new, a request for a new leaf machine in there. Are you assuming that that'll help stabilize some of those costs, being that you're not having to repair a machine, or...
Basically, what it costs us every year for each leaf machine is approximately $2,500.
I would imagine they get beat up pretty good.
And then, as, that's what our newer machines...
Yep.
Is our older machines, as the metal gets thinner, we're buying housings, and it's about $5,500. So we carry about $13,000 just, just for leaf collection. And like Robert said, during our snow season this year, we, we kinda lucked out, so we're doing very well with, with that end of it. Um, the leaf, the leafs program, that does take a beating.
Sure.
And we never know what's gonna happen. Uh, we've been lucky the last few years, but there's been times where there's been people put other material in with it, and then, as those machines are going, it'll stop it dead and break a transmission, and then, you know, I'm out another $3,500 for that. So, you know, the citizens have been really well to us on not putting foreign objects in with our leaves, and, you know, we kinda prey on that and, and emphasize it in every press release we have. Like Robert said, it is a, it is a guessing game. Uh, you know, we, you know, we pride ourselves in our equipment, and we, you know, maintain it very well, so we kinda go off of what we had the year before.
Yeah, that's, I was just curious, if a new leaf machine will help stabilize the cost of summer. Uh, we can't fix somebody jamming up your, a transmission and putting a brand-new machine, but, you know, the repairs of, I don't know, how old the, the old...
I mean, the leaf machine, and that's fine, that's for eight weeks out of the year. It's the new trucks and the equipment that you give me...
Yep.
That really takes back from the parts accounts and, and our work. That, that's really the major cost.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, you know, one item, and I, and I apologize for not being clear about it earlier, and I know that, Chris, you may have picked it up, and that is, on the repair and maintenance snow, where we, you know, we're, we're look, we're recommending a $3,000 increase, $2,000 of that is because of reallocation from two of the line items that went to zero. So really, that line item, if you, if you don't take into account the auto supplies and parts and auto repair and maintenance, which were both budgeted at a thousand, and, and we're recommending that you not fund it next year, that's being shifted up to that, to that $3,000 increase. So it's really only a increase in that line item of a thousand dollars if you didn't take into account the shifting of those two other items. All right, sorry, I didn't make that clear earlier.
Okay.
So what you're saying, excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam...
Go ahead, go ahead.
And then what you're saying, Robert, in that line item, repair and maintenance snow, it's really a $1,000 net increase?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Because we're eliminating the other two items.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve Department 320 motor vehicle, motor vehicle and equipment pool in the amount of $139,674.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Transfer station.
Next item is transfer station.
Working me again, huh? Put my spectacles back on.
Put on your other hat, Dominic, your transfer hat.
The recommended budget is $93,561. It's an increase of $1,128, or 1.22%. Uh, most items are, uh, pretty much the same. Uh, the increase in the transfer station has to do with, uh, we pay a tip fee for the, you know, when you fill up the, the, you know, the dumpsters, and we have to take them, and, you know, and dump them, you know, so we have, you know, just seeing that, that, those costs are a little bit higher than what we, you know, what we had budgeted. So, uh, we, we see a slight increase in the, in the tip fee for next year, so we feel it's appropriate to, uh, to budget for that as well. It's a thousand dollars, a little bit over a thousand dollars. Otherwise, all the line, other line items are staying the same.
Yep. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 323 transfer station in the amount of $93,561.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dominic.
Okay.
Yep.
Our next, um, budget is the water pollution control on page J18 and J19. Joe, you can take a step up if you like. The, uh, this is a budget, this is an enterprise budget, so this is not any, this budget does not impact the general fund, um, you know, but, uh, certainly plays a significant role in terms of the operation of the community. Um, this year, we're finalizing, um, the improvements to the, you know, the phosphorus upgrade, and that, um, is gonna result in increasing our operating costs by operating that portion of the wastewater treatment plant. Tie-in bond, uh, you know, we had done that, you know, spreadsheet that showed, uh, you know, estimating where our expenditures were gonna go, you know, over the next several years, and we had an estimate from them of what the operating increases would be, that would be impacting in the next fiscal year. Um, uh, the, uh, the budget that's being recommended is, is a budget of $4,273,077. It's an increase of $914,155, or 27.22%. I will tell you that if you go back to the user charge projections of last year, we were projecting what the budget would be for this year was gonna be $4,378,000. So we're actually $100,000 less than what tie-in bond predicted we were gonna have for this year. So they predicted that the increase was gonna be closer to $1 million. So, um, so... So, so while it looks like a large increase, we actually had it in the planning stages in terms of our user charges projections, and, and it's one of the reasons why we were ramping up our user charges for each year, so that we could absorb this increase with, you know, with having a, you know, not having such a large increase in user charges, as you may recall, we've actually had a smaller increase to the user charges than what we even projected because of some of the expenses, you know, as we were ramping up to this. So, so some of the increases that you see here, now, Rob, did I get a new sheet on this?
No, I did not print out a new sheet, so the actual...
The actual budget is...
Yeah.
Is different than the...
The request is actually...
The fiscal year '21?
Right.
Budget is?
$4,319,727.
Okay. And the reason for that is, we had a recent conversation with Joe. He's, he's looking for an additional full-time person. He has two people that are going to be retiring in, in a short period of time. We have two employees that have been with us for...
Four years and 32 years.
And in a wastewater treatment plant, you can't replace that institutional knowledge with a brand-new person the day they leave, because, because there's a lot of training that has to go into, to, to work at a wastewater treatment plant and be productive. And we'd like to, in anticipation of that, hire an additional person in anticipation of that retirement, so that, so that they can get some training, so when the person does retire, you know, we can, we can move forward without, you know, hopefully missing a beat to a, to a degree. Joe actually asked for the full-time person last year. His thought process was we were going through the phosphorus upgrade and to have an additional person onboard when we, when we were, you know, dealing with a new system, that person could be trained a little bit sooner than later. I did not recommend that last year, but I, you know, but I, I think he's demonstrated the need for an additional full-time person this year. It still puts us under, under the budget that Ty and Bond had predicted that we were going to have any, so we're coming in under what, you know, what we had used in our projections to begin with. So that actual increase...
The increase is $960,805 or 28.6%.
We should have given you an update.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's my bad. I didn't print it out. Sorry.
So the actual increase of the full-time salary line item, just so, so they can write it in.
In this full-time salary line item, the increase is $65,830 or 11.42%.
If not for the full-time person, the increase would have been the $19,000 that you see in front of you, which is a 2.25% increase plus, I believe, one step increase.
Yes, one, one step, yes.
That's really the only change in the number, you know, with the rest of the numbers that you see there. We have operating supplies, and that's to run the new system. It's going to increase by $218,000. Other contractual is, is to get rid of our sludge. The new phosphorus system is going to produce more sludge. We truck sludge out to Manabasset. That's, that's the estimated cost for that. We do see electricity going up by $10,000. We have a new building that, and new equipment in that building, so we're estimating that the cost of that is going to be $10,000 more than, than current budget. And heating oil, we're heating an additional building as well, so that's the reason for the $4,000 increase in that line item. We also see increases in principal and interest as far as our debt service is concerned. That contributes to, you know, of the, of the increase, that's of the, you know, almost $1 million increase, more than half of it is because of principal and interest. And the other half is for operating costs. But again, I'd like to emphasize that the total budget that's being recommended this evening is, is, is less than what we had projected it would be for this, for, for the next fiscal year. There's six employees with the water pollution control department? And again, if we wait till they retire and we hire somebody behind them, we would see a big drop-off in, in our, you know, capabilities. And it would be more reliance on, you know, the experienced people, which, you know, which, you know, they're not, you know, there's limited people down at the wastewater treatment plant to begin with.
Madam Chair, could you just read those new numbers again? The manager's request and...
He printed them, so he's going to go...
Oh, that's fine. We can entertain ourselves for a little while.
Well, we're waiting for that. Can I just ask a question regarding the full-time salary line?
Yep.
So there's six employees at the water pollution control facility now. You're looking to have that at seven, at least for part of the next fiscal year. Anticipating returning to six the year after, or continuing to run at seven moving forward?
No, I would continue running at seven moving forward. Part of it is retirement, and part of it is the extra workload that all the phosphorus equipment is going to be, is going to require of the staff that I currently have.
Okay.
So there's, there's tasks, I'm going to take them off, which someone new can do, and assign them to tasks which someone new couldn't do.
So then, this, this increase of $65,830, you know, roughly 46 of it is for a new person, but maintaining that level of staffing going forward. So when we get to '21, '22, we should be seeing more of just standard regular rate increase, pay increases with steps.
I will point out that in the wintertime, when we have a, a snow season, we assign, we reassign one of the water pollution control persons to the roadways to help out with snow plowing and, and, and winter work. With the, with the injuries that Dom talked about before with the rotator cuff and, you know, you know, and, and the back, being out for eight weeks, you know, you know, they work together. Joe works with Dom to say, okay, I could transfer a person over for, you know, a couple of weeks to help out because you're doing roads. So we, you know, we don't keep these departments somewhat, you know, isolated. They can only stay in your, your own silo. They, we do, when, when possible, you know, transfer some people, you know, on, on a, on an interim basis to fill in some, some gaps or some unexpected things that have happened. And, you know, I appreciate that cooperation between the departments. It can't always be done, but, but, you know, that, that plays a factor in, in some of this as well.
And it's good for the town, although it is hard to get people to come over to the water pollution control plant, because that's really not the transfer that they want.
They all want the roadways department.
That's a much better transfer, yes.
And, you know, unfortunately, if you come up with, if you come over to the wastewater treatment plant, you really have to have knowledge to, to be effective over there. You know, there isn't, you know, it's very technical work, so the tendency seems to be in the other direction to begin with, because you couldn't put a road waste person over at the water pollution control authority to really help out.
But I would think we kind of expected with having to, with the changes to the water pollution control facility, expected having extra costs and probably new, you know, it's a whole new system we're running over there, so I'm not shocked by it. I just, you know, there's one thing that we all know that the taxpayers hate is add additional staff, so I just wanted to be able to answer the questions when they ask me about it, so that's why I was curious.
Now, this certainly has been the toughest budget that I've brought before you. There are 13 cities and towns in Connecticut that had to do a phosphorus upgrade, and we're well ahead of just about every one of them, so I don't have another treatment plant to go back and see what their actual costs are, because nobody's run a full season yet. The best I was able to do was to take our facilities plan, which we did two and a half, three years ago, which had recommendations for additional electricity, additional chemicals, and additional sledge transport and disposal, and plug these, plug those numbers in, and it is an unknown, but it's, it's my best estimate of where we need to be based on the information that I have.
Now, is the project due to be completed in, in soon, like this March or April? Is that one that...
The, the contract, the contract itself said that it would be completed by July 1.
Oh, July.
They are now actually looking for substantial completion. We're about three months ahead of schedule. We're required under our D permit to be removing phosphorus since April 1, and that's still our goal, is to have the entire system up by April 1.
And just to clarify as well, based upon the budget, the amended budget that we put in front of you, you know, with the correction, we're $59,000 under what was projected to be the budget for, for next year from Ty and Bond, so...
Okay.
That played a factor in my recommendation, was, you know, how is it going to affect user charges, you know, those kinds of items, and, and, you know, it's going to come under what we had projected, so, you know, hopefully that, you know, it's not going, it's not going to increase user charges more than what we anticipated because of the additional person.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a quick question about the electricity. We budgeted $300,000 for it. As of February 20, we are only $107,000 of the way through the electricity. Is that something that we pay more of towards the end of the year or as springtime comes, or?
Not necessarily. What, what we did in the past, over the past year, year and a half, is we've changed some of our motors from being a motor that turns on and off, on and off, to running on a variable frequency drive. So it ramps up and ramps down, which is, which ends up in the savings in electricity. And I believe that's why we're, we're running better with our electricity number than we were. We're finally seeing the savings of doing those, those installations of the variable frequency drives.
If, if not for the phosphorus project, we'd probably be looking for a decrease in our electricity.
Okay.
You know, really, the increase is, is not just $10,000 that's driving up the cost because of the phosphorus. It's, it's our actual cost plus, you know, what we estimate it's going to be to run the new system. And that's, you know, it's a guess based upon what Ty and Bond had given us, and hopefully we do better than that, and we will have better information next year after having a full year under our belt.
So the estimate is $110,000 to run the new facility, $110,000. I know it's not, it's a $10,000 increase, but looking at what the estimated expenditure for the year is...
Which is $200,000.
$200,000. Looking at, it's, once we're online, it's going to cost us $110,000 more to run the new facility.
That's, that's based on the facilities plan, which is the best information I have.
Any other questions? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve? Do we, Robert, what number are we going to use here? We have...
I would recommend...
$4,319?
Yes.
That's the number? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 340 in the amount of $4,319,727.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And do we have to do anything with the, the fund revenue? Do we have to approve that, or is that...
No, we'll do that when we do the, the user charges in September.
Okay.
All set?
Okay.
I'll see you.
I guess we're all set. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Pain all over the place.
No, she did. She redid the schedule. She did keep it out. No, I know. We're going to do John Bossy's area. John, you here? Going to start with C 6, zoning board of appeals.
Hi, John.
Good night. Hello.
ZBA recommended a budget of $600,000. It's a decrease of $2,500. The decrease is due to the advertising line item. All other items staying the same.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 112 in the amount of $600.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
John's disappointed because he had a long explanation for that. Next item, I have a civil preparedness. Recommended budget of $18,000, which is a decrease of $985 from the current fiscal year, and that has to do with the new fire marshal's, you know, slight, a slight change for the new fire marshal, coming in slightly less than what the other fire marshal was making. So that's correct number, right, Rob?
Yep.
Okay. $18,000 we're recommending for this department.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to fund Department 215 in the amount of $18,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next is Technical Services, E 15. Recommended budget of $177,150. It's an increase of $5,850 or 3.42%. The, all of that is in the full-time salary line item. It's a 2.25% increase plus a step increase for individuals in the union.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 325 in the amount of $177,150.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Engineering.
Next is Engineering, E 17. Recommended budget of $81,745, which is an increase of $1,725 or 2.16%. All of the increase is in the full-time salary, and, and what you see is, the increase is 2.25%.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 330 in the amount of $81,745.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Building Inspector.
Building Inspector's line item is recommended at $73,782. It's an increase of $7,462 or 11.25%. Part-time, we, we can, we have a contract with Bristol, the city of Bristol, to do some of our inspection. Those, that amount is, is under other contractual, and we have, and we have a part-time building inspector who does some, who's working for us part-time. Our building inspector went from full-time to part-time, so the part-time inspector's in on Tuesdays and Thursdays to full-time, and Bristol is in, they give us currently 16 hours a week. So we see a slight decrease in the, in the part-time salary based upon, you know, based upon actual costs. So we're lowering that line item somewhat. Other contractual is going up for a couple of reasons. One is that the hours that we had originally anticipated for inspection services, we had budgeted 12. We actually ended up using 16 hours a week, so that extra four hours for, you know, is reflected in, in the current fiscal year. So you see where we're going to be going over budget as far as, as far as building inspection, you know, other contractual is concerned. And we need those 16 hours for next year, so, you know, so that's the reason for the increase. Plus Bristol didn't give us, you know, an hourly number until, you know, we were, we were past our budget, you know, what we had estimated for the budget. So their, their actual amount that they were, hourly rate that they were charging us ended up being a little bit more than what we had anticipated it would be. But I would point out, so that's, that's the bad news, but I would point out that in fiscal year '19, which was the year before we, we used Bristol for our, for our, these shared services, the building inspector's budget was $89,852. That was the fiscal year '19 budget, and what's being requested this year is $73,782. So even with the increases of Bristol, we're still...
$16,000.
$16,000 lower than we were two years ago. So, you know, it's higher than we thought it would be from Bristol because of the additional hours and a little bit additional in terms of the hourly rate, but we're still $16,000 lower than we were before we, we went into the service, you know, we went, we went into this method. The transition has been pretty good. good. It's, it's, it's put more work on, on, on staff, you know, our staff to try to coordinate it. But, you know, and, and I would say that for the first year was, you know, we were getting used to each other. I think it's working out fairly well now, John.
Yes, it's working out well. The only difficulties that we have is providing office services during the, during the Monday, Wednesday, Friday type situation. I mean, disability officials in on two days a week. Some people haven't caught on to that particular schedule and show up on a, a day that he's not there. And if, if other staff can help the person, they do. Otherwise, they have to, you know, we have to get them to schedule a meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Bristol doesn't, we do, we do no inspections on Fridays. So that may be problematic to people. But they've begun to get in, kind of in sync with the fact that we only do inspections Monday through Thursday. I mean, next year with the AmeriCole building, there may be some, it's hard to guess how that's going to fit into everything. That building is, well, it's going to be a huge building. That building is 250,000 square feet size and upwards to 140 feet tall. There'll be a lot of hours that will be required for that. Given, if they do have a more condensed schedule, there'll be a lot of hours. If they spread the schedule out, it'd be lesser, less hours. We'll see how that impacts everything else. But I think we have that under control.
If we have increased costs with respect, as a result of that, you know, construction, we expect a relatively large building and, you know, building permit fee. So, you know, that will help to offset it as well. So, you know, offset that increased cost, you know, I'm not sure that we've estimated what we think the building, building permit fee might be.
They've told us the building's going to be worth $60 million. So I don't know what construction costs will be. Let's just say it's two-thirds. That's still $40 million. So it's, it's.
So our fee based on $40 million is?
It's a lot.
A lot.
It's in the, in the range of $300,000 to $400,000, I think. Just off the top of my head. So, I mean, it's just, that would be a substantial revenue.
Okay.
So that would, that would offset our, you know, obviously offset our, our, our cost to review the plans, which will probably kick over, we're going to use, you know, our part-time person, but also with the assistance of Bristol because of the complexity of the project and get a second set of eyes. We could even go out and hire a, you know, a third party to take a look at it. But we've spoken, John has spoken to Bristol and they feel comfortable that they, they should be able to do that plan review. But that plan review is not part of the 16 hours that he provided us a week. That's an addition to that. Because they use higher, you know, they use their in-house staff. But, you know, but we feel, we feel comfortable that the, the building permit's going to pay for any increase. We, we may go over the, this budget, but we're going to have, you know, increases on the, on the revenue side, on the building inspection fee. And I would just point out that that's a one-time fee. We're not going to get that increase every year. So you have to be cognizant of that, you know, considering on the revenue side as well. And that fee's going to come this year.
Yeah, for most.
In the current fiscal year. We expect the building permit fee to be in the current.
Well, part, it'll be probably spread over the, the latter part of this fiscal year and the first part of the, the following, the one after July.
After July 1st.
I don't expect them to get all their permits.
At the same time.
For the building. I don't expect them to, they expect to deliver us plans in April, around April 1st. They want to break around June 1st. But I don't expect them to get, to get all the permits on June 1st. I expect them to get the initial permits on June 1st and then sometime thereafter, on July, August, to get the remaining permits.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Any questions for John on this one? Or you guys all set with that? All right. Yep.
A motion to fund Department 360 in the amount of $73,782.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, the change you gave us was for the other department, right, Rob?
Yes, Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal.
Okay.
The recommended budget for the Fire Marshal's office is, let me just double, is $75,800. It's a slight decrease from the current budget. The reason why we gave you this update was there was, our, our full-time Fire Marshal began, I think his first week was this week.
Yeah, it's this week. He started, he started Monday.
Started Monday. You know, so we were putting this budget together and there was some miscommunication to where we actually hired him as far as his salary was concerned. There was a misunderstanding that we hired him at, at $79,000 when he was actually hired at $89,000. So it's less than what the previous Fire Marshal was making, slightly less. But there was, there was a miscommunication with respect to what the, what the initial salary was. But so the, the corrected budget is $75,800, which is still a decrease from the, a slight decrease of about, of about 1% from the current year's budget as far as the Fire Marshal's concern. Rob, in his, in his correction, did not correct the, the bottom.
Right. The bottom part should say 89, $18,071,89 total.
Yeah.
Which will tie out to the numbers in the actual budget on top.
Apologize for the, for that, but.
Yeah. Those were last minute changes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the Fire Marshal Department? There's not much here. There's not much change other than.
Right. Right. No, that's correct. The change is, is with the incorrect summary that we gave you the first time. So it's not much change from the existing budget, that's for sure.
So the total combined salary is 79, correct?
That's correct.
With both of those departments?
Eighty-nine.
It's 89.
It's 89.
He didn't correct the bottom. Rob didn't.
Right. The bottom, the bottom should say 18 for civil preparedness, which you just approved, and 71 for this.
Oh, okay.
So the total is 89.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Department 370? Anybody?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 370 in the amount of $89,000.
No.
No, 75.
Seventy-five, eight.
Seventy-five, eight.
Because a portion of that salary is split between.
That's a spread, civil preparedness.
Yep.
On the amount of $75,800.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We understand where we're going? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks, John.
Next is Police Department, Chief Katania and his trusty numbers man, Eddie.
Eddie.
Eddie, the numbers man.
Hey, Eddie.
Go to D5.
Good evening.
Hello.
The recommended budget for the Police Department is $4,583,457. It's an increase of $72,928 or 1.62%. The increase to the full-time salary, you know, is really, you know, where all of the increase is, is a $78,000 increase represents a 2.13%. That reflects some changes in personnel. People who retired and people coming into entry-level position as well as step increases for the other offices. There's, you know, a lot of moving parts in here. But, so, so when you take all that into account, the replacement of two officers, two retirements, and, and some step increases for the newer officers, the actual increase in the salary is less than the, you know, 2.25% that we give, you know, we, we add for, you know, normal full-time employees. Recognizing, of course, that the police union contract ends June 30th of this year. So, you know, we're estimating what our increase is going to be for next year. It could be, could be higher, could be lower, could be the same, you know. But we're using, recommending an average increase right now in that line of 2.25%.
Correct.
But when you mix in all the other numbers, it changes. It goes down slightly. Part-time salary is a reflection of the increase to the, to the, you know, to the full-time numbers that the, you know, so the part-time employees, we get a 2.25% increase in their salary as well.
Overtime, our favorite.
Yeah, we're not, although we're going to go over on overtime this year. We anticipate we are going to go over. We're not recommending an increase overtime this year. We're going to try to ride it out in terms of, well, at least what, that's what we're recommending. You know, we, we do, we do anticipate that the two retiring officers will be, will be bringing two new officers to you probably sometime in April. These are officers who are certified. They're, they're actually certified officers from other communities. So we won't have to go through the, at least the academy portion of it. And, and the, the FTO, field training process will be shortened as well. So we'll be able to have them out on the road significantly sooner than we would if we hired somebody that didn't, that wasn't certified to begin with. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
The other contractual services you see a decrease of $12,500. For, for many years, the line painting of the streets was, was in this, in the police line item. You can see where they've run over budget in fiscal year 19. For one reason or another, some of that additional line painting was a result of the, the road bond program. You repaint the road, you know, you repave the roads and then we, we put the lines down. It probably should be recategorized into the, you know, it is part of the road bond program if we're paving. We are using more, more line painting just, just for traffic calming, those types of things. So what we're proposing to do is to take the line painting out of the Police Department budget and putting it in, you know, putting it in Town Aid Road budget or, you know, something along those lines, you know, something that's off budget. So that, you know, so that, you know, it probably shouldn't be in this budget. So, you know, it's not that we're not going to spend the money. It's just that we don't feel it's appropriate for this particular budget.
So you're saying to put it in Town Aid Road, that's completely out of your operating budget, correct?
Right. That's where we take some materials and that kind of thing. So we feel that we have sufficient dollars in that to at least do that for the time being. At some point in time, we may bring line painting somewhere, you know, back in. We may even allocate some of the line painting into the road bond program because if we repave the roads and we, we're just going to have to do a better accounting of, of how that's.
So.
Some of it might be replacing the lines that are there. Some of it may be as a result of the road bond program.
So that's allowed, that expense during the paving, the repaving, that we could include the painting as well? That's perfectly.
On the new roads, yeah.
Normal. Okay.
That's all part of it.
Okay. Right.
So otherwise, you know, all of the line items are pretty much the same. You see a little increase in the auto repair and maintenance. And, and part of that has to do with, you know, with, you know, running at or over budget. You can see fiscal year 19 was significantly, significantly over what we had budgeted, or at least, you know, for the current fiscal year. And we're going to be running a little bit over this year estimated. And so I felt a slight increase in that line item made sense. Otherwise, all of the other line items are, you know, relatively small increases or no increases at all.
Okay.
Now, I would point out that the, the chief asked for an additional full-time officer in, in the full-time salary account. I did not include this as a recommendation, but I, I would like the, the town council to listen to the reason for the request. And I felt, you know, we were, you know, that, that roadways is, the, the increase in a full-time person for roadways was, was a higher priority. And, and, you know, and said, well, can't do both. Although, there are some strategies that we can use if the council is interested and perhaps, you know, receptive to the idea of perhaps adding an officer that could be done halfway through the year. So that, so the increase wouldn't be as significant in the next fiscal year. So it could be done over a two-year period. But I'd like the chief to talk about his reasons for the request. And it certainly is, in my opinion, justifiable, justifiable request. But I, you know, I was trying to, you know, keep the, you know, the budget increase, you know, to something at least from a starting point would, that would be, you know, that I thought would be more palatable to the town council and perhaps others as well. So with that in mind, Chief, if you don't want to.
All right, thank you.
If you, if you don't mind, I'd.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, Council members.
Hi, Chief.
It's kind of interesting that Mr. Nazzo set me up for the, the presentation here when he said the public, one thing the public hates is additional staff because taxes go up, right? So what's intriguing to me is that in this particular case, my request is backed up by citizen requests. So we get an awful lot of calls, an awful lot of complaints about speed, about traffic around school bus stops, around neighborhood stop sign violations. We have what we call 12 hotspots in the town that we try to continuously hit. One of the other things that I'm trying to assign with the traffic car is to get our speed trailers out on some type of systematic basis. So we get them everywhere all the time and they, and they keep rotating and they keep moving. It's kind of a difficult task using the regular staff to do it because they'll get pulled away on an assignment and then the trailer, trailer will stay out. And I, I just don't have the fluidity that I'm looking for with that. Ticket writing, that type of campaign, I just don't really have the impact that I'm looking to make without a specific unit to handle that type of complaint. We're paying some overtime now as a mandatory overtime four-hour slot to accomplish meeting the public's demands for speed enforcement in neighborhoods. So I'll get calls from everything, from West Pearl to South Washington to Maxine to every area of the town that you can imagine, Pinnacle and, and other places that the public really wants to see the officers out writing tickets. And, and in this community, what I find very, very intriguing and very satisfying is they don't care if it's they themselves who get the tickets or their neighbors. They want us there writing tickets. And oftentimes, we are writing tickets to some of the residents. And oftentimes, it's just cut through traffic that we're just trying to train to go slow. Cook Street's a prime example. We have mechanical signs out there and you could sit by a mechanical sign and see the cars speed by it. I think they have value, but I think the disciplinary aspect of a, of a ticket really is the, is the training key really to slow people down. So with that in mind, what I was recommending is, and I think everybody on the, on the current council was aware that I've been targeting 40 sworn personnel for this department for the last five years at least. And I have a place for those personnel. We would be looking for our 39th sworn member. I think there's some salary offsetting that could be looked at with regard to this type of hiring. There'll be some salary offsetting with bringing on two brand-new employees with two very experienced tenured employees leaving. There'll also be a cut in a little bit of overtime, maybe an estimate of somewhere around $16,000 a year in overtime that I'm using to cover four-hour slots. So there's a, there's a little bit of money and a little bit of wiggle room that I also see in putting the additional officer on. We could really use them. It's, it's a matter of being able to meet the demands that we're facing. It is getting exceptionally busy. You could see this week with the additional workload that we have on us that we're, we could be stretched pretty thin. This would be a benefit to us in many different areas, not just the traffic car, but also when we have somebody out. I'll give you an example. I have four long-term injury people right now out and the two retirees. So we have been six down for approximately six months or more. So the overtime budget is spiking because we're trying to cover those shifts. And this, this would help. I mean, obviously, we would move that person to an opening if we had to. They may not be doing the traffic that day if I had, if I was down one or two officers. But in the big scheme of things, it would benefit us with the traffic and would also supply us with the additional officer to, to fill in as needed.
I will tell you that the, you know, I have a saying that says, you know, the, you know, the, the biggest complaint that I get in my office is not, is not high tax, it's, it's speeding on local roads. But, you know, you know, it's almost like Wackamo, you know, you, you go over here and they go over there, you know, over there. But, you know, so there is, there is a certain demand for it. Demand doesn't rise to the level of having, you know, people come to a budget hearing or something along those lines. But, you know, you know, we had the, you know, the, the families that gathered on Metacomet. We've had, you know.
Betsy.
Betsy Road. We've had.
Maxine.
Maxine now. And, you know, so, you know, and the chief and I, you know, meet with the neighborhood and we, we do some analysis and we make some changes. But they take a while, they take a while to get. But they take a while, they take a while to get there. And, you know, meanwhile, you know, it would be helpful for us if we had somebody who was dedicated to do, just doing traffic in addition to the, you know, the, the regular officers that, that cover, you know, particular areas of the town as, as dictated. So, you know, so I certainly see a benefit to it, but, you know, it's a question of, you know, whether the council wants us to try to, I mean, we, you know, try to, you know, work it out in terms of, you know, I think the increase to the tax rate here is, you know, if, if there was ever a time to, to add staff, it would be in a year like this year where the tax rate is, is lower than it normally would be. I know that there, you know, we may be having some decreases. We expect to have some decreases on the health insurance side, which could probably pay for this and keep us at the same expenditure level that we're at right now. There may be some things we can do on the revenue side that we can present for your consideration if you say, hey, try to make it work and this is what our goal would be. We, you know, we, we try to, you know, work on something like that. But, you know, I want to make sure that that's something that you, you think is worthwhile trying to accomplish. I'm not necessarily looking to add it to the, to the bottom line because I think there's going to be some movement, again, on the health insurance side, which will lower the Board of Education's budget and the town budget, which would probably be, you know, pretty close to being able to cover something like this for a full year. And we may only do it, you know, for half a year, you know, so.
So what is the, what is the salary impact if we added that person? Total impact? What is the total salary that we would-
$63,000.
Fifty-three?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
That's the entry level.
Madam Chair, if I may add one comment, please. With regard to our current staffing level, we also have another very veteran employee that at any day could retire. So this may very well just bring us back to 38. We're sort of always playing catch-up. So there's also that added benefit to it to have somebody on, on the job so that we can continue to staff the shifts. So it may, if one of the employees I'm thinking of retires in the next three months, let's say, we would already be set up for success to plug that person back in.
Well, that assumes you get somebody who's certified.
Well, we're doing pretty good.
Madam Chair.
He does, he does have one person that's on the hook for that. So, so I, yeah.
I just have a question. I don't know if it's a question or more of a statement. I know we used to have a traffic person that was, that was his job and, under a different chief. And it, it became a nightmare to get through this town sometimes because they like, they had blocks everywhere. They would have blockade.
This is a completely different initiative.
Okay, so this is strictly for the speeding issues and-
Stop signs.
Crazy driving.
Yes, ma'am. That, that's a completely different initiative that was under that regime.
Right.
What I'm proposing is a traditional traffic car that would do traffic, would do education, would go to schools and speak about driving safety at the high school, would move the, the radar trailer into the proper locations, would work with engineering to, to put up speed signs and, as we have on Cook Street, but would also write tickets and give warnings and educate the public through that type of process. This, this is a completely different thing. We're, we're nowhere near the initiative you're referring to.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I have a, I would suggest that not to approve the, the police department tonight until we start, get through some of the other issues that we're talking about. The expenditures are pretty much in line with where we always are. So I would suggest we hold this one out as we have done with one of the other departments and then see where we are so we can, we can take a determination on that additional-
All right, thank you. Very good.
-position, whether it's going to be full year or halfway through the year. Maybe we can work some things through it.
Thank you.
So, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep, I am.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have one other statement, not regarding personnel, if I may.
Yep.
I mentioned this last year and in speaking with Robert recently, I mentioned it. And I know it's going to be ugly, one of these budget years, but I, I feel I have to say it again. The Goose Town radio system, in my opinion, needs to be moved out of capital and into operating expense because it's a cost that's going on every year forever. And it should be in the year-to-year operating budget and not in the capital budget. That's just my opinion. It's an ongoing expense that's never going away. If this was the kind of thing where we had a five-year lease and at the end of it, we owned it, and then it was going to come off the capital budget, I'd say, fine, leave it there. But if for the next 30 years, we're going to pay this, it's of my opinion that it should be in the operating budget. And I know the first year we move it there, it's going to be an ugly number. But we have to be able to say the net is still the same. It's just moving, in my opinion, to where it should actually be.
As long as we keep our capital reflective of that year, that that's going to go out and move, so, yeah.
Well, one way to accomplish that and would be, we have $800,000 proposed from the general fund to go to capital.
Right.
So if you were to take $135,000 and make, and lower the 800,000 to, you know, six, 65, you know, contribution to capital fund and then put that 135 into the police department, then net impact would not, there wouldn't be an increase in the net impact. And in fact, there wouldn't be an increase in what the people are actually going to vote on because they vote on, on the general fund side, they vote on the general government or-
Total budget, yeah.
Total budget minus the Board of Education.
Exactly.
So it would include the capital, it would include debt service. So, you know, the actual percentage increase, you know, it, we're going to have a larger decrease in the, in the, in the debt service next year, I believe, than the, than, than this year. So, so, you know, the, the percentage increase is going to be less next year. But, I mean, it could be done this year if you wanted to swap out, you know, swap it as, as I just, you know.
I just, you know, until the next piece of technology comes along where this is now irrelevant, right? I mean, because we, we know that's going to happen. 30 years ago, the ratings you bought were for 25 years. And let's face it, after about eight years, they were probably irrelevant, so. But if it's, in the, in the forecast, if it's every year, we're going to allocate $160 to Goose Town-
$1,000.
Goose Town radio lease, it really should be in your operating budget. Just my opinion. By all means, feel free to disagree with me, it's just one voice.
Well, you know, I would, I, I agree, it should be where it belongs, certainly. And, you know, just moving it from capital into operating, it's going to not change the net bottom. Is that appropriate, though, to do that? Should that be tracked as an operating expenditure versus a capital? Does that, does that make sense to do that, first of all?
I believe it does.
Okay.
You, I would point out that, that was, would go into line item 52, 450, other contractual, excuse me, maintenance contracts. And you will notice the request was for 215.
Mm-hmm.
And I reduced that to 53. That's really, the chief was proposing to put it in there. He, he listened to what Jesse had to say last year and, and others, and others who nodded their head yes when he did that.
I was looking to get this 39th guy, so I tried to put something in there that might-
So, I mean, the chief did propose it and, you know, and when I looked at the, you know, percentage increases, I, you know, I guess I could have lowered the capital improvement, but, you know, capital, that's, you know, I'd rather that was a policy decision of the, of the council.
And I'm not saying we have to do it this year. I just, again, wanted to say, it's just my opinion, that's where it belongs.
Yep. Let's see when we get to capital, how we want to handle some of these things, because-
Then I'm very curious to see what the numbers look like on adding that 39th officer.
Yep. Yep. All right. So having said that, Chief, is there anything else you'd like to add to the discussion tonight?
Nothing further. I think we have EMS and ACO.
Yep.
Yep. I think we're all set. And we'll take, we're going to take care of this when we get to the end of all of our, as we put everything else together, so.
All right, thank you.
Next item we have is K-9 Control.
Yep.
Page D7. Recommended budget of $90,217. Increase of $2,340 or 2.66%. We have the full-time salary increasing by 2.25%. We have part-time salary increasing by slightly more than that, but only $303 on a percentage basis. You see overtime going up by $1,000. Most of that increase is because we have more mandatory training for, you know, for even our part-time officers and even the full-time officers and, you know, full-time employees. So, so that's the reason for the increase in the overtime is, you know, we can't really squeeze that in during the day because there's, you know, there's a lot of demand during the day. So, you know, some of that's getting covered on weekends and, you know, that type of training. So that's the reason for the $1,000 increase in the, in the overtime account. You know, other minor items is, you know, we've taken out the advertising, of course, and a slight increase in the auto repair and maintenance, $150, so.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve Department 205, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 205 in the amount of $90,217.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item we have is emergency medical service on page D9. Recommended budget of $15,775, which is a decrease of $75. This is a, we, we contract with CMed with regards to this and that's based, you know, basically on a per capita formula. And for us, that results in a very slight decrease because we have a, whether, you know, it looks like the per capita stayed the same, but our, but our, our population dropped according to the Department of Health from the previous year.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve Department 206, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve Department 206 in the amount of $15,775.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eddie, nice to see you again. Thanks, Chief. We'll let you know.
The next item we have was, was a review of revenues. And what I'd like to do, if, if, with your permission, is just to kind of run through them and, you know, just, and answer any questions you might have about, you know, our revenues and, and, you know, you know, not necessarily, you know, ask you to approve them, obviously, because it involves the, you know, calculation of the mill rate, but at least all the other light items, if that's okay. So that's on, starts on page A1, I guess. Oh. Not A1. Is it A1? Yeah, I got it. Yeah. It's actually A3. Putting the current taxes aside, because that was, you know, when we did the, you know, calculated mill rate based on the budget, that changes, that number obviously changes. Prior taxes, we're recommending a budget of $525,000, which is what we have budgeted for the current fiscal year. For motor vehicle supplemental, we're recommending a budget of $400,000. We've run over in, in 2019 and we've run over, we're estimating that we're going to go over in, you know, over in 2020. But we like to budget conservatively as far as that's concerned, you know, certainly there's a, you know, based on those numbers, there is a justification for perhaps bumping that up a little bit to cover the cost of a full-time police officer that we were just- no, no. Suspense list, we're recommending it's at the current level. And interest on the collections, you know, we're running a little bit under, we're estimating that we're going to run a little bit under this year. I'm not sure if that number's still going to hold up since we've already collected 225, but, you know, we ran over in the, in the previous year and we collected more than we anticipated in the previous year. So there, you know, we're trying to stay conservative on, on some of these numbers because, because that's the way we try to operate.
Yeah, the more aggressive we get with tax collections, the less interest in prior taxes we get. So we're sending out delinquent notices every quarter, which is great, but once we collect those back taxes, this number doesn't come in as high as we would like it to.
It goes back to the old-
Depends on what side you're sitting on, huh?
We'd rather make 18, 18% on our interest instead of collecting it and putting it in the bank and making 2%.
Right.
I guess the caveat there is if you're collecting, you're collecting the interest.
And some of the, you know, prior taxes, for example, that we, that we've collected, again, is, is, you know, one of them was, was a large collection that we made. Another one's going to be a relatively large collection when we sell the tax lanes, you know, so.
Yep.
So, you know.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may? The anticipated sale of the tax lien, I thought that was going to be in this fiscal year.
Uh, it, it, it's a little bit more complicated than Mike has told me recently, but yes, it is anticipated in the current fiscal year. We just haven't collected it yet.
Okay.
It's supposed to happen after the, the, we get it in escrow. It gets deposited in escrow, so Mike would, as soon as it's signed, Mike would have it in, in escrow account. But it doesn't get released to us till, till the judge rules on the foreclosure action, you know, on the property that we sold the tax liens on. And that's supposed to happen in the current fiscal year.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And because it's ramped up, you know, I, I wasn't aware that we wouldn't, we wouldn't get the money until after the foreclosure procedure was, was, was concluded. But that's expected to be sometime in April at the latest, is what I'm being told.
Okay, thank you.
As far as building permits are concerned, we anticipate collecting, you know, a little bit less than what we had budgeted. I'm not sure that, you know, that number was done before we did AmeriCall. And again, AmeriCall's going to be, you know, somewhere around maybe June 1st, so we'll get, we'll get a, you know, we may hit our $300,000 budget.
Yeah, and if, if what John was saying is correct, then, you know, the, the budget for next year could go up a little bit, but I can't really estimate on something I don't have yet.
And additionally, you don't want to bump it up too much-
Right.
-because, you know, it's not going to be there the following year.
Right.
Police permits, we think can be budgeted up a little bit higher based upon previous receipts or at least recent receipts over the last couple of years. condo fees, you know, I'm down on the fines and fees now. You know, pretty much the same, you know, police fees, a little bit higher than, you know, based on, you know, what we've collected over the last couple of years.
That, that's our police special duty work.
So that's, is that, that's kind of an in and out?
It's an in and out, yeah.
We, we don't do our, our police special duty is not in the operating budget, so this, these are the fees that we collect that go to, you know, reimburse for that.
Right.
Although there were, you know, pretty much staying the same miscellaneous fees, we're just being conservative on that. We, the last two years, we've only collected about $1,000 on them, each of them, so we don't feel carrying $11,000 budget would be prudent.
Can I just correct what, what we just said about the police fees? This, this dollar amount here is our-
Oh, is our-
Administrative charge. Okay, Robert's correct that the, the cost that we, we pay the police officers out, we then bill the contractors for those costs. They pay a 15% admin fee. That's what this dollar amount represents, is the 15% admin fee.
So we do keep that?
So we, this is ours, yes. It's not, it's, it's a direct revenue, yes.
Investment income, we're bumping that up, no, we're actually keeping it the same.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, this, well, this year's been tough so far. And I don't, you know, being conservative with revenues, I don't want to bump it up and not have it come in, so. I'm hoping at 75 it stays.
ECS is based upon what the governor's proposed in our budget, you know, for this year.
So, so Robert, can we just back up one line? The special ed excess cost grant for 45302, we don't have that in our revenue.
Yeah, we zeroed that out a lot.
We, we zeroed it out, right. We, we get the money and it goes right back out, so.
We should probably just eliminate it as a-
So that's what I was asking about earlier, because I did look at this and so the, whatever that total amount is, goes directly, it's actually counted in the Board of Ed budget?
It's, right, it's a-
They count it?
Right, as a, as a, as an offset. Right, as a, as a, as an offset.
Okay. So my question at that point was, they get a certain amount of money, but if, if they expend less than that, where does the excess of that, you know?
They get less money.
They get, where?
They get less.
They get less.
I got it. Okay.
Right. And if you.
It's not like it really ends up with a surplus?
Right.
No. No, and actually, if you look at the Board of Ed object detail, that's, I'll find the page number for you, but for 2019.
Yep.
We only received $574,800. We budgeted, I believe, that year was $850,000.
Okay, okay.
They didn't spend it, we didn't get it, it wasn't transferred over to the Board of Ed.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
We should probably eliminate, now that we've, you know, we, we did, for a time, we used to filter the.
Correct.
Excess into this.
It was held here and then it would be transferred over as needed.
I can get rid of the line items if you just want.
But now, it's just.
Netted out.
On that side.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We can, we can get rid of them.
All right.
At one time, we, I think at one time, several years ago, the board would, for the excess, they would, they would estimate, and then we would put the revenue on this side with the idea that we would transfer it to them.
Correct.
And if they went over on the expenditure side and there was more excess monies that came in, if they didn't, if they could cover that, that, those, those extra expenditures with other light items and not need the excess monies, that's what they would do.
Okay.
So there was a, there was a time when they wouldn't come back to the council and say, hey, we went over in excess and we need some of that additional excess revenues because all of our other expenditures, we can't transfer $50,000 from another account to, to cover the, the overage and the excess. You know, so you got $50,000 extra, you know, in revenue, so can you, you know, transfer that to us? You know, we could do that. At some point in time, we, we said that's kind of an awkward situation and, you know, it doesn't really happen all that often to begin with. So we just budgeted it in their, in their line item. So, so they're going to match up what they have. They're not going to get any more. If they, if they spend more, they're going to get more revenue, but it's not going to cover, you know, all of their expenses. But, but in the past, they could transfer from the other line item in their operating budget to perhaps cover that, that excess. And then we'd get to keep the extra revenue.
Yep. No more.
No more.
Right.
I mean, we could go back to that. I don't recommend we do.
Well, it was like that many, many years ago.
Yes.
Many, many years ago.
Yes.
And I just, when I was going through here, I saw that, you know, there is no, we don't ever put it in our revenue now, so.
Yeah. And, and those are legacy line items that are just kind of rolled over. I can take them out. So I just took them out, they're gone. You can see them on the screen, they're gone, so.
Thank you.
All of those other line items that are listed there are, are numbers that we anticipated we're going to get through the, through the state of Connecticut, based on the, you know, the budget that's been presented. As far as conveyance taxes, you know, going back to other revenues, conveyance taxes, which is, you know, when properties is bought and sold, we get a portion of that. We're bumping that up a little bit this year. But, you know, it's a 175, we're bringing it up to $200,000 based upon what we've collected in 19. And we see, you know, a similar trend happening in 2020. So we feel that we can raise that up a little bit. A little bit of a decrease in the payment in lieu of taxes from the Housing Authority. They've been a little slow in paying us their share. They know how much they owe us. We press them every once in a while and they throw us a few dollars, but.
Yes.
They're running a tight budget right now. Miscellaneous other, we've budgeted 150. Sometimes we get more, sometimes we get less. You know, it's just kind of a placeholder for, for, you know, unexpected revenue that comes in.
What would be included in that? Where it would vary such?
In, in the, in the base budget of 150, we have the cell tower leases, the Robertson Airport, you know, payment in lieu of taxes, very small dollars coming in from the Chamber of Commerce, copies at, you know, what is it, 50 cents a page, and miscellaneous other, you know, items. You know, the actual received in 19, I'm sure somebody's asked the question, what is that? That was, you know, some of the energy incentives that we got, you know, over, you know, from Eversource for various things, doing, you know, it's all one-time revenue. It's nothing that I can't budget for to say, hey, yeah, we're going to get this when it's unknown during, you know, this budget process time. So the only things I can really budget, again, being conservative and knowing, is the ones that I know the, you know, the cell phone towers and Robertson Airport primarily. And the cell phone towers are actually, you know, they're pretty much fixed. They're not increasing or.
Well, we did lose, we did lose.
And we did, and we did lose a cell phone tower, yes. Well, because of consolidation of.
Carriers.
Carriers.
And so they, you know, eliminated one of the leases after, they asked, they could buy us out earlier if we said no. And.
Yeah.
They were paying for the tower for, I don't know, a year and a half beyond, they, they were even using it, but they had a commitment to pay us to bring it out.
I mean, we, we could, you know, I, we get offers once a month, once every two months, hey, we'll buy your cell phone towers. Again, that's one-time revenue versus $150,000 every year theoretically, budgetarily anyway. And the payout would be, you know, it varies obviously based on the market, but, you know, maybe three to four years of.
Of revenue.
Revenue that we budget every year, you know what I mean?
They give you $600,000 and, you know, and we're basically gambling that, you know, that our lease is going to go beyond, you know, even though it says it's going to go beyond a certain, you know, date, you know.
Yeah, these leases, I mean, the two we have go to like 2045, 2050.
Ah.
Year, you know, the year of 2045, so.
But they can get out of it, you know, under particular circumstances.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So they're, you know, they're gambling that, hey, we'll, we'll take your place and, and, you know, we'll take a loss for four years and then we got, you know, a revenue stream after that. Or maybe it's five years. But if we could use $600,000 a year instead of $150,000 a year for the next, you know, 20 years or whatever, you know. And, and we've, we've had times when the, when the lease has been, you know, ended premature because of the consolidation that we spoke about, so.
Mm-hmm.
But we've, you know, we've, we've had some discussions with the council over time. And I believe that you're, when we've spoken to you about it, I think we actually did a cost benefit one time and ran the numbers for you and said, you know, whatever, you know, we don't recommend that you do this, but certainly if you feel you wanted, you know, you know, to sell the leases, you could do that.
Yeah. Well, unless there's some urgent need at some unforeseen massive problem that we need to get that, then I would say, yeah. But if it's just unearned income that you just keep getting in just because it's there, I think that's the way, that's what you should do.
Yes, and that's, that's what we were, that's what we, what we have recommended.
Yeah. Okay.
Interfund transfers in is what the Water Push Control Authority transfers to us as a result of some of the services that we provide them, which includes some shared, you know, salary pieces. For example, one of the employees down at the, in the Tax and Assessing Office, you know, they, because we collect user charges, in the Tax and Assessing Office, we, we, they reimburse us for one employee that, down there, one full-time employee. They reimburse for a portion of the assistant manager's, this is to the town manager's position, I expect the assist, when we, when we have the new assistant manager that we will, you know, that they will, there is some oversight of the Water Push Control Authority that's appropriate. And that, that's something that's been historically done even before I got here, so. But that's the reason for the interfund transfers in. Use of fund balance, we did use $300,000 this year. In previous years, we'd used $200,000. So, you know, I'm recommending $200,000. Doesn't mean you can't change it. And then on the debt management, you know, a decrease of $303,000, basically because our debt management has gone down by 300, or, excuse me, our debt payment schedule has gone down by $303,000. So it's still slightly above $4.4 million by $30,350. So that's the reason why, that's how we calculated that number. Next year, the debt service will be below $4.4 million.
Yeah, there's a, there's a debt that's coming off, is it the, the TIF?
Uh, yeah.
Do you have that? I think that's coming off next year.
We, we've had a, had a couple.
Yep.
Coming, coming due. Let me just find the right page here.
It's debt service, so it can't.
Yeah. It's on H, H2 and H3.
H?
H2 and H3, yeah. I mean, we, we have, the TIF is coming off, that I'm not sure in 20, fiscal year 21.
Yep.
So that, you know, right now, the, the proposed budget for next year is $383,000 for that, between principal and interest.
That's 383 that's coming up?
Yeah, that, that would come off in '22.
Then in '23, you have one that's coming off.
We have, we have one coming off in '23. That's, that's a big one. That, that's, you know, that, that right now is almost $1.4 million in '21. So our, our debt is going to go down pretty significantly over the next two, three fiscal years.
Yep.
You know, that assumes, again, that we're not going to add any more debt to it. However, that's, you know, we have estimated, you know, a $6 million bond payment, I'm sorry, $6 million bond offering in May of this year for the band we did in November.
Is that for Wheeler?
That's for Wheeler, yeah. So that'll hopefully be the final piece we need for that project. You know, and that, that estimate of, of principal and interest is already in this proposed budget. So even with that, the '22 and '23 budgets.
Going down by $300,000.
It's going to go down a lot, yeah. Yeah.
And is that one somewhere around the time you're planning on doing the middle school or sometime a few years after that?
It'd definitely be after that.
It'll be after that.
Yeah. But that's what we're talking about, filling in the, filling in that, that dip. And keeping it at the $4.4 million.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions about the revenue? You will let us know when we hear regarding the insurance.
Yes, yes. And after we talk tonight, I did go on the website. Like I said, nothing is listed yet, so no.
Okay.
And I think what, what we may do is, is give you an idea of what the savings would be if it was 4% increase instead of what we have budgeted, what the savings would be, and give you an idea if it was 3.5%. Just so you get a sense of what those numbers are. We may not know them for sure by then, but if you have a sense of what those numbers are, then, you know, you know, you might want to take that into consideration.
So this is both the Board and the council side?
Yes, we, we can do the calculations on both and say, we're going to.
Yeah.
If it's at 4% or 3.5%, it's going to be reduced by that amount. So you could either reduce it when you make your recommendation and increase and use that somewhere else. You could always change your budget after the public hearing.
Yep.
It's when you know the number. So if you want to do it now with, you know, anticipating it, I would understand why. But if, but if, but if the increase ends up being higher than the 3.5% or the 4% or whatever you choose, you're just going to have to go backwards. That's all. But there may be a good reason for you to do that if you're talking about adding in the, you know, the officer, for example, or, or, you know, we know we got to add $10,000 in because of the, the mistake we made with the fire marshal.
Right. Okay. Anything else tonight?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Okay. Tomorrow, we're here again for capital?
Yes, and we'll do the capital, you know, all at one time. So you can see it in full, you know. In the past, we've done it piecemeal, you know, where you do each, and you kind of forget how it all fits together. So we thought, we, you know, I thought we'd do it a little bit different this year. And, and I think it might be hopefully more productive as far as capital. So everybody's coming back that has a capital item.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you tomorrow.